I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Ed- Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and baroness requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners at their meeting. Excuse me, be forwarded to Commissioners for final action on May twenty first. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Staylor to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be asked to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Once a point has been made, there's no need to continue the same motion, though. In other words, we don't want to beat a dead horse. Dylan, the leaders, invocation.
Pray with us if you would. Do Lord, thank you for another day. Thank you for everyone's safe travels here. Pray for guidance for both our local leaders. Also grant safety to all of our servants here.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Flag.
United States of America.
To the Republicans.
One nation, to God, indivisible, everyty, justice, brother.
We do have a quorum. James Van Meter is absent. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, April eighteenth?
Motion for approval.
I second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Can I get approval for the agenda, today's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I second.
All in favor? Passes. We're gonna start new business. Here Douglas, Dylan.
Yes, sir, this is a, uh, application for conditional use for massage, uh, therapeutic massage at six twenty-nine Furious Ferry Road. This shows the location of the property on the east side of Furious Ferry Road, a little south of the intersection with Evans to Locks Road. This shows the zoning of the property. It's already zoned P one. Um, additionally, we'll see in a moment that it's already been developed and is in operation as a hair and beauty salon. Um, they are simply seeking approval for the massage use. Um, they're looking to make use of one private room in their pre-existing hair and beauty salon. Uh, they have one licensed employee, state licensed massage therapist, that's looking to operate out of that room in the, in the development. This is an aerial of the site. Again, it's developed at this point. We'll see it in a second in existing site photo. This is a plat for the site. Uh, this is, uh, May eighteen, the hair and beauty salon there onsite. Um, uh, again, it's built in, in operation currently. Um, on the, the, uh, future development map, it's in the neighborhood's character area. That's this yellow character area. However, it is on Furious Ferry Road, which is a professional corridor. That means with road frontage on Furious Ferry Road, there are, uh, concessions made for the allowance of professional zoning. Again, this lot already has that professional zoning, so the only question is the conditional use for massage. And along the exact same professional corridor, Furious Ferry, in the past several years, we've had three or four different requests and eventual approvals for, uh, massage on that corridor without any issues with the surrounding community being reported. And so staff is in support of this application.
Thanks. The owner applicant, Kessler Davis, would you like to speak? Anybody here like to speak in favor of this? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of RZ two-four dash zero-five dash zero-one conditional use of massage at six-two-nine Furious Ferry Road.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Yes, sir, this is another application for conditional use, this time for minor automotive repair at three zero-zero-one McCrory Court. This shows the location of the site, uh, on the west side of Industrial Park Drive, uh, the intersection with McCrory Court, uh, just north of the, uh, intersection with, uh, of Bel Air Road with Industrial Park Drive. Uh, the zoning on the site is M one, that's our light industrial zoning district. Uh, this site is built out with a multi-tenant, uh, industrial building. Um, it's mostly metal, it fits the character of the area. What you'll see here, uh, shown on this slide is that all of the property along Industrial Park Drive, for some way on either side, is at the very least commercial, but predominantly industrial in character. So the development of the site is very, uh, very much so in keeping with the surrounding area, uh, along this, uh, Industrial Park Drive. Um, the conditional use that's being requested, again, is for minor, minor automotive repair. Uh, the specific business that is, this request is kind of made for is a window tinning business. Um, again, minor automotive repair, you should think of things like, uh, quick service oil change or accessory installation, in this case including window tinning as an accessory to vehicles. This shows the site, again, at this point, it's completed. There's a multi-tenant, uh, metal building fitting the industrial character of the site that we'll see here in just a second. This is a plat for the parcel. And again, this is the built-out, this is the structure there. There's already industrial use businesses there onsite, things like contractors' offices, uh, very, you know, typical for an industrial character area like this. Um, a concern that possibly could be had with this conditional use might be, you know, buildup of vehicles needing repair onsite, you know, affiliated with minor automotive repair. Uh, however, as you can see here, each suite in this building only has one roll-up door. Uh, they're not drive-through like, you know, most quick service auto, you know, quick so- service oil change businesses are. So we don't think that this site will attract that kind of business and therefore inhibit or adversely impact any of the surrounding area or the other businesses that are there onsite. Uh, this shows that the parcel is within the mixed-use activity center, uh, character area, um, but however, like we already just discussed, Industrial Park Drive is actually a, a very industrial character area, even though industrial uses aren't typically seen in that mixed-use area. The zoning already exists and they're asking for a conditional use within that pre-existing industrial zoning. And so given all those factors, staff is also in support of this request.
Thank you. Uh, owner, Mr. Holdings, Thomas Banks, would you like to come forward? Anyone here like to speak in favor of this quest? Anyone here like to speak out against this request? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of RZ two-four dash oh-five dash oh-two conditional use for minor vehicle repair on three thousand and one McCrory Court.
All in favor? Motion carries. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a request for rezoning of four acres of the property at seventy-one thirty-one Bill Dorn Road from RA Residential Agricultural to S one special for an outdoor target archery range and, uh, RA uses, which is of course what the property can already be used for. Uh, this shows the location of the property on the north side of Bill Dorn Road, uh, between White Oak Road and Morris Callaway Road. And it is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. Uh, this does show an aerial, and there is a private airport on the adjacent property, which is a bit of an unusual circumstance. Uh, we did reach out to the FAA and they had no concerns with the rezoning request in relation to that private airport. Uh, this shows the portion of the property to be rezoned, it is approximately four acres of the site. And the existing driveway there, you can see the driveway runs, uh, past this house. Uh, the applicant lives on the property there in that house and is leasing the property behind him, uh, that is requested to be rezoned. That is that existing driveway that runs past his house and to the, the existing archery range behind it. Uh, so overall, the, the intent is to, to continue using this property for the outdoor archery ranges. Um, so you can see here how this is currently set up. Uh, this is the entrance from that gravel driveway we just saw. Uh, so there is parking, uh, at the front of the, the site. And then there are three archery ranges set up on this property. Uh, one here oriented, actually kind of northwest, uh, one along the east property line that basically parallels that property line, and then a, a open kind of wooded area with movable targets, um, in it. Uh, there's also some overflow parking, uh, that you can see down in this corner, uh, but that main parking is in the, the southwest corner of the site. Uh, some of the concerns with this are, of course, in regards to kind of public safety and buffering, you know, making sure all of the, the activity of the site does stay on this property and does not cross property lines. Uh, we did look into safety requirements for archery ranges, so the general kind of guidelines are that you should have, uh, for the, the range distances that they're using, the twenty-five yard safety zone to the side of the targets, and then a twenty-five yard, uh, buffer zone behind the targets as well. Uh, so what that looks like on site, uh, for the two kind of ranges on the western side of the property, they do have plenty of space to meet that seventy-five feet. Uh, where that gets a little tighter is for that range on the east side of the property. You can see there that seventy-five feet takes up, uh, the majority of that cleared area, which is where they would, of course, be setting up the, the targets. Uh, so we do have some recommendations related to that. Uh, the applicants did propose to install a natural buffer, uh, so several rows of lob lolly pines and then a row of hardwood and fruit trees. Uh, there's some concerns with this. Uh, the lob lolly pli- pines, as you see there, were intended to be planted primarily as seedlings, uh, in one row at, you know, about two feet tall or, or eighteen, eighteen inches to two feet tall. Uh, that's not going to create much of a buffer now. Um, it will, of course, eventually grow, but lob lolly pines are, you know, pretty skinny naturally. They're not really going to fill out and provide, uh, much of a, a buffer. Uh, so we did have some concerns with that, uh, from both a visual and a, a safety standpoint. Uh, and, and with that safety distance that's recommended, uh, what we're recommending instead, since that, that spacing is tight, is a structural element to that buffer for the length of that range on the east property line. Uh, so that yellow line on your screen there shows the recommended fence location. And given the, the potential concerns, uh, with, you know, mis-aimed or misfired arrows possibly being, uh, part of the concern in this location, uh, we are recommending that that fence be an eight-foot fence rather than a standard six-foot privacy fence, uh, but it would only be required basically parallel to that range, and then the natural buffer, as the applicants have proposed, would be used for the remainder of that property line. In terms of the future development map, this property is in the rural character area. Uh, this character area allows for, of course, agricultural and very low-density residential uses, as well as civic and open space uses. Um, that does include parks, which can include outdoor recreation uses, uh, such as the archery, that is what this would fall under, is a, an outdoor recreation use. Uh, that doesn't fit neatly into the RA zoning district, which is why we're here, but in terms of the, the character area and the, the appropriate uses out here, uh, this is an out-of-line, uh, to have some outdoor recreation in a rural area. Uh, there are, of course, some concerns, like we've noted, and we're trying to address those with the conditions, with the requirements for the fence, for example, and for the buffer. Um, this is a smaller acreage than a lot of what we see for rezonings of event facilities or outdoor recreation, so the structural elements to the buffer, uh, kind of help, help mitigate and balance that, because they're not going to have as much separation as, as some similar examples we've seen. Uh, so staff is recommending approval with conditions, uh, requirements that targets are not placed within fifty feet of property lines, um, and are not oriented towards adjacent properties unless they are at least seventy-five feet from the property lines. Uh, that solid fence with the minimum height of eight feet along the eastern property line, parallel to the target range location, um, basically from the shooting line, seventy-five yards down, to accommodate the entire anticipated kind of, uh, shooting range plus a safety buffer behind the targets. Uh, the privacy fence and proposed natural buffer, uh, would need to be installed prior to the range being reopened, and that the range should be utilized only during daylight hours, so there's no artificial lighting on the site that could disturb the neighbors.
Thank you. The owners, Ms. Hubbard and applicant, Mr. Martin, would you like to come forward? Thank you. Just state your name and address, please. All speakers, give their name and address.
Stephanie Hubbard. Um, my physical address is, but I do have, I mean, seventy-one, oh, Dorn. I'm, I'm.
Uh, James Jake Martin, uh, seven-one-two-three Bill Dorn Road. Uh, it said I'm the applicant. Um, I would have typed this out, because if I stand up here and try to remember it all, I won't get it. All right? Um, so, uh, thanks for taking the time to hear us tonight, I do appreciate it. All right? Um, you know, I'm very passionate about archery, um, the ways that most people follow college football, NFL, NBA, that archery is me. All right, that, that's it. All right? Um, and, and partly to that is probably because I credit archery was saving my life. All right? Um, I believe that the bow and arrow is the only reason, um, that I'm not another statistic of the twenty-two veterans today. All right? Um, that was my therapy. All right? Served the country for twenty-two years, um, eight years of that deployed as a combat infantryman, um, and the Army is what brought me and my wife here to Columbia County, um, in two thousand and twelve. All right? Um, after retirement, we stuck around because it's such a great area, um, we enjoyed the people, the community. I mean, hard to beat Apling. All right? Uh, I try not to come to Evans, to be honest with you. All right? Um, especially since there's a Dollar General now, so we're, we're good. All right? Um, but again, after getting settled, um, in Apling in late two thousand and twelve, I decided that I wanted to get more involved with the community, um, and outside the fence of what was then Fort Gordon. Um, so through some, um, communication, I found out that the Columbia County four-H archery program, um, was on its way out and needed coaches. Um, so I reached out to the folks that were still involved, um, and jumped in. Um, through that, um, you know, went and got certified through four-H, um, so the Georgia four-H Safe Sport Coaching Certification. Um, since then, I, I've continued to continue my education. I'm one of approximately four hun- only four hundred, um, US archery level four coaches in the country. I, um, National Field Archery Association, uh, coach, um, Scholastic Three-D Archery Advanced Instructor Trainer, um, which means I've trained, I've trained the trainers, um, throughout these programs, all right? Um, I am a certified national judge in both USA Archery and a National Field Archery, uh, Association. I, I've planned the layout, I've led the setup, and I've supervised the execution of hundreds of archery tournaments at local, state, and national levels, both indoor and outdoor, um, from Las Vegas to Louisville, Kentucky, to Apling, Georgia. All right? Been there, done all those. Um, I've ran the Georgia S three DA State Program for four years, um, while serving on the National Rules Committee, uh, where I oversaw the safe operation, um, for thousands of youth, youth archers. All right? I'm also a certified Georgia DNR Hunter Safety Instructor. Um, I, I am called upon as a subject matter expert, um, in archery, and whether that's the equipment, uh, whether that's the, the coaching, whether that's, you know, running tournaments or rules, uh, my phone rings constantly. All right? Um, I, I've hosted multiple volunteer archery events, um, throughout Columbia County, um, North, North Columbia Elementary School Carnival, um, many years, uh, assisted two Columbia County and one McDuffie County School in creating and running their national archery and schools programs, uh, set up and run archery programs for, um, homeschool covenants, um, Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops to receive their archery certifications. Um, I have an exceptional history of safety, with zero reported safety incidents, accidents, or injuries from any practice, um, or tournament ever held under my purview. All right? I run several archery tournaments under the business of Top Knock Archery. I host such events as Tri-Archery, which can be as simple as a one-hour, you know, introduction that you would see at, at a Parks and Recs kind of event, um, to a, um, to the type of a four-session Explore Archery, which you might see at, at a summer camp. Um, and, and we do those all of the time. All right? Um, host three-D archery tournaments approximately once a month, um, during the season, which typically is February to July or August. Um, that allows archers from around the state to kind of participate in our local events. All right? As part, the, the part I'm most proud of, um, through all of this archery, though, is that, um, that we formed a team called Team On Point. All right? So for the last seven years, the team of all volunteer coaches, uh, we have coached hundreds and hundreds of kids who have competed both locally and nationally. To date, Team On Point has over a dozen national champions, nearly four dozen state champions, multiple state record holders. We currently have a thirteen-year-old female archer, excuse me. That is one of the only four selected females in the entire southeast US. All right? And she's on track for Team USA, and you will watch her on TV compete in international events. All right? She's also my grant doctor, so. There's that. All right? Um, all right? But the statistic I'm probably the most power- proud of through all of that, um, is the, the multiple high school graduates that we've had with college scholarships, all right? We have sent kids to college with college money, um, to Georgia Southern, University of Georgia, Augusta University, Georgia Tech, Emmanuel College, and such schools out of state, such as University of Pikeville and Union College in Kentucky, um, where they got scholarship money and got to continue archery through college. All right? Some of them have since graduated, went on, and started archery programs where they reside now. All right? So during my renewal of my business license for two thousand and twenty-four, I was notified that business could not be held on property zoned RA. All right? During our indoor season, um, the Columbia County Merchant Association lets us use the Fairgrounds Building, and so that's where we have indoor from roughly week after the county fair is done until end of February. All right? Um, I was told that was, that was fine, um, because it was zoned right, and we do some events at other places. All right? I acknowledge that, um, from the zoning office, um, and then I, so I immediately waived all team fees for the remainder of the year, um, so we could continue to meet a, as a team and just not have business. All right? Um, so the, the team practice was still going to be at seventy-one thirty-one Bill Dorn Road, the property we're discussing, but therefore I was conducting no business, um, and, and the loss of, uh, the monthly dues was irrelevant to me. All right? Um, it's more important that these kids were together, being outside and socializing with their friends. All right? Um, this was deemed to, to not be enough, and after another complaint, uh, the landowner, Ms. Stephanie, and I decided the only way to rid ourselves of this issue, uh, was to have the practice area rezoned as S one. All right? Uh, therefore, I'm requesting the rezoning of approximately four acres, um, on Bill Dorn Road from RA to S one, for a specific use of outdoor target archery range. Um, I've reviewed the staff's recommendations, and, and while I believe there is some misinterpretation of the archery safety recommendations, um, I do believe they aired on the side of safety, and for that I find no fault. I do, do truly appreciate the staff's work and their willingness to ask questions and research the subject before coming to a recommendation. All right? I hope that you'll vote to recommend approval of this application, so that archery program and many kids, um, can get started again. Thank you.
We've received a lot of letters and support, so we're aware in that what a great program it is. I was a scout, and I learned archery back in the sixties.
There's a, there's a couple Eagle Scouts sitting behind us that are now teaching archery.
My dad was a scout master, so.
Yes, sir.
Love it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Questions? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak out in favor of this request? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak out against this proposal? Come forward to just state your name and your address, please, sir.
My name's Frederick Carpenter. I'm at seven-one-zero-seven Bill Dorn Road, which is the adjacent property to the east. And my property shares just less than a three-thousand-foot border with property lying for this, uh, This has been my home, seven-one-zero-seven, forty-four years. Forty-four years I've been a resident, property owner, parent, taxpayer, and voter. I agree that children need wholesome activities. And my own experience, and this goes back several years, when I hosted four-H club events for children with horses. And that was rather extensive, because my daughter was born here, and we've always had horses and still do today. Very important part of my life, like archery, is very important to other people's lives. I was doing this activity with four-H clubs ten to twelve years before applicants moved here to the area. So, I'm not opposed to archery and having the archery range next door. That's not why I'm here, by any means. But I've, uh, looked at the, uh, Planning Commission result, and, uh, I, I find that they need to go further, in my opinion. Uh, why? Because my family and I live outdoor lives, just like they do. And, uh, we have fears for our safety as a family. We have fears for our horses being injured, our other livestock. We have a driveway from the public road down adjacent to this area. We have a residential house right there, have machinery there. And we have fear that there will be accidents, uh, even with the finest instruction that I'm certain that is provided by these individuals involved. There's no, no way to guarantee that there's not going to be accidents happen, misfired arrows. If you look at your packet, you'll see pictures of a misfired arrow stuck in a tree. Here's one right here. This is an arrow. You're not familiar with them. A little missile. This particular one exited property involved in the vicinity of, of the targets that are set up no more than forty feet from my residential house. The trajectory of this arrow left their property and entered a yard that separates my horse pasture and the residential house. In fact, the trajectory took this arrow directly across the front porch of my house and embedded itself deep in the ground, right up to the arrowhead, and the side of my airport runway. In fact, it embedded itself not more than twenty feet from the center line of that runway. I'm afraid of those kind of, uh, accidents, and I don't think anybody can guarantee they're not going to happen, particularly with, with children, um, being instructed. Children are more reckless than a lot of adults. Could easily happen, have a misfire with a child, and come through there. Now, I do, do very much applaud, uh, Planning Commission staff. They've, they've done an excellent job, and they obviously recognize there are safety issues and also potential dangers with this sport. Uh, this arrow is an example right there. Comes across the property line, by the best intentions. Those are accidents. The safety issues and potential dangers, they have recognized, apply to the participants, too, not only to adjoining neighbors like me. I firmly feel that these conditions are reasonable. They need to be tightened. They need to be tightened more. When you think of, uh, barriers from other examples that you have examined in the county, what comes to mind is buffers, which can be landscaping, berms, which are raised areas, and also barriers. Well, the planning staff has decided that, uh, landscaping is sufficient in some areas, but I agree with them that this eight-foot solid wood fence, parallel with target area, is a wonderful idea. And I, I applaud their, their decisions on that, recognizing the safety issue. I'm not so sure about the lob lolly pines, what they call for.
I think, I think they stated they weren't real sure of that either.
Three to four feet tall. Yeah. Yeah. Now, even if they're spaced seven feet apart, that's, that's rarely going to stop an arrow that's fired. Uh, I think that can be worked on, but we need something more robust in terms of, of buffers. Uh, even the, the county itself, the ordinances, has a list of trees. Even the the county itself, the ordinances, has a list of trees of the type that are sufficient to create a real barrier in a situation like this. That would solve the danger problem. I encourage that fence go from the power poles. See them on your on your chart here. Right now, they're recommending they cover half of that area right adjacent to the target area and shooting range itself. It would certainly make sense to me to forget these lablalle pine landscaping buffers. Let's just run that fence from power pole to power pole. That includes the whole side of the the four acres there that they want to use for these purposes, these what could be lethal purposes. That fence were up there, they could conduct their activities over there without fear of a misfired arrow going across onto my property. My horse pasture is there, I have what I consider valuable horses and other livestock. I have a barn there, yard, a residential home. Let's protect the whole thing. It's not that much farther. Run that that wood fence down there. I think that would be a wonderful idea. In addition to that, safety and tranquility that I've enjoyed out there for 44 years would not be jeopardized. Another way it can be jeopardized is that now in this beautiful area, both properties, residential and 100% agricultural, now we're proposing to have a commercial business out there. Commercial business for profit. And how is that happening? The danger is happening, arrows coming across the property line, the targets are too close, no more than 30 feet from my residential house at the moment.
Yes, sir, that's been addressed.
And they can be moved. There's a pasture full of animals. The driveway is exposed all the way down alongside this this four acres. My visitors, my use itself, vehicles can be compromised by accidents and misfires. In addition to that, for the last year and a half particularly, we have had relentless trespassing from this property and these activities which they promote over there and enjoy. Not daily, but certainly weekly, and sometimes more than than once or twice a week. Kids, they're interested, spectators, they want to come across. They see my horses, they're beautiful, they want to come pet them, they want to come pet the goats. Now, I've been a good neighbor all these years, I'm I'm pretty friendly, but I don't really want to accept the responsibility of the liability for these trespassers coming across, even when I'm not there, petting the animals. What if one bites one or somebody twists their ankle and falls? Well, I'm liable, property owner is going to get sued, not the sponsors of the archery tournament. Another main thing is sanitation problem that I I have noticed for years with the activities that they have been been conducting over there. There are no facilities at all for these intended activities and for the activities they have been engaging in for years.
Talking about restrooms?
Yes, sir. They have had food service on these events, they have had food sales, food consumption. On this property, there's no water, no water, no legal electricity there, no service. There are no toilets, there are no toilets, there are no sanitary facilities. We have no sewage infrastructure and
Your time's almost up.
There's been many times, there's there's been 30 cars and as many as they agree that there have been 200 people out there. The result is dozens of people are doing their business in the woods. Now, I resent that and I don't I think Columbia County is better than that. Oh, I believe that you all can solve this whole problem tonight, right here. All you have to do is enhance the conclusions of your planning staff in order that this solid wood fencing be extended from pole to pole.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Cover the whole area.
Time's up.
And that way, we can all coexist safely and peacefully without conflict and without relentless trespassing.
Thank you, sir.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak out against this? Get a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of conditions of RZ 24-05-03 rezoning from RA to S1 for an outdoor target archery range on four acre property at the location of 7131 Bill Dorn Road.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential at 414 Callaway Road Extension. This shows the location of the site on the north side of Hurford Farm Road and the west side of Callaway Road Extension. It is currently zoned R1, as are the surrounding properties to the south and the east. To the west, you can see additional R2 zoning closely for Southwind Village. And to clarify, I mean, both of those are single-family residential zoning districts. The difference is the minimum lot size requirement. So R1 would allow a 40,000 square foot minimum lot size. The R2 zoning district would allow a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size and will require that sewer be provided to the property. This shows the aerial of the site, there is an existing house near the front of the property. And you can see an existing pond and utility easement near the north side of the property. This is a photo of the existing site. We do have an initial concept plan, we are not reviewing this for approval tonight, we are still expecting some modifications to this. But you can see this does show kind of the general idea of the development as well as the existing buffered stream that runs through the middle of the property. They are proposing to develop, of course, single-family lots on this site with one entrance from Callaway Road Extension. They are most likely going to have to mass grade this property, so they are showing the 50-foot buffers around the perimeter on this concept plan. And that is not anticipated to change. Callaway Road Extension is a pretty narrow road, so there are traffic conditions that go along with the recommendation. They will have to widen this road and they will have to do a pavement study to determine whether the pavement section itself needs to be upgraded. That's probably pretty likely, but at a minimum, they will have to widen the road to accommodate the additional traffic to this development. In terms of the future development map, this is in the neighborhood's character area. This area is intended for the development of single-family subdivisions like this one. It is surrounded by additional developments with Southwind Village to the the south. Crawford Creek is just up the road from here, so this is very much a residential area and the continued residential development does fit with the future development plan. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that pavement section on Callaway Road be analyzed and that the road be widened to the 24-foot width for at least 50 feet beyond the proposed subdivision entrance.
Thank you. Owner Rogers Screwz or D.R. Horton, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf?
West. Good evening, I'm Jared Poe with D.R. Horton, 4234 Wheeler Road in Martinez. Miss Montgomery's done a great job kind of laying this out for you tonight, but I do want to just briefly give you some of our thoughts and our vision of this project. You don't have to look very hard to find reports and data that tell us there is a housing shortage in this country. Shortage is not only an issue on the national scale, but it's an issue here in the CSRA and especially in Columbia County. You know that many people purchased homes over the last few years with interest rates, which are not a thing anymore. But we're seeing that those people are holding on to those homes, holding on to those great interest rates, and they're not reselling. This limited resale supply has caused a strain on the housing market with very limited supply. We believe that a new subdivision with R2 zoning allows us to provide adequate product and price points to meet the housing needs of the market in our growing area. A few weeks ago, I did take the time to go out to Callaway Road, knock on the residence doors out there. Able to speak to some of them, not all of them because they weren't home at the time, and I did leave information packets on their doorsteps with contact information and I wanted to give folks that would be most impacted by this potential development the opportunity to voice their concerns and thoughts and opinions on this plan. One of the main concerns that I heard was that many of the residents did not want houses right up along Callaway Road, whether it be backyards, front yards, right up on Callaway Road. As Ms. Montgomery did mention, we are providing a 50-foot undisturbed buffer along the road to help shield those existing homes from the new development. I know there are also some stormwater concerns with this site. And from what I understand, concerns about water flowing from Callaway Road down onto the property. We intend to address these concerns during design so that no existing or new residences are negatively. And finally, I know, as Ms. Montgomery mentioned, there's concerns with the current width and condition of Callaway Road. And we fully intend to work with traffic engineering to make whatever upgrades are necessary so we can provide adequate and safe access from the proposed. In closing, our goals for a new R2 zone subdivision along this road are to provide exceptional value to home buyers while also maintaining high-quality standards, to provide beautified streetscapes and an impressive entrance to help create a sense of community, to provide much-needed housing for many who love and appreciate the quality of life. Thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak out in favor of this request? Anybody in the audience like to speak out opposed? Oh.
Sorry. My name is Trey Jackson, 413 Callaway Road Extension. First off, let me just say thank you for this time to speak on behalf of the residents on Callaway Road Extension. Couple of things that I have, I'm not going to regurgitate everything that we sent in on email. But two of my biggest issues that I have with this is the stormwater, of course, and I do want to hit on that a little bit more because it is something that is a big concern of ours. I live on the top of Callaway Road Extension and after a rain or anything, very saturated ground. Go down to the bottom of the hill when you walk the kids down the down the road, it's see the neighbors' ditches and it's full of water. So we worry about the stormwater runoff and what these 118 houses are going to bring to our our road, the taxpayers that are there now. And just looking at the map, it it doesn't show and highlight how saturated this creek is, I don't believe, because it is a issue. You know, one of my biggest problems with this is the amount of traffic that's going to propose to Callaway Road Extension. And I ask that this this road be, we know that Hurford Farm is going to be widened in the future. I mean, it's my bearings, okay, so. In regards to this, we we asked that, you know, there'd be a turning lane on Hurford Farm Road if 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 this subdivision takes place. And if not, will that, I mean, will that be a delay in the permits at such time as the road project nears completion? Callaway Road Extension residents already have a hard time turning onto Hurford Farm Road as there is a little bit of a blind hill, so it seems that adding 118 additional homes worth of traffic would lead to additional traffic backups without some measures being taken to address the additional volume of traffic entering and exiting this narrow unmarked road. If the entrance is not feasible to be moved to Hurford Farm Road, moving the entrance exit location closer to Hurford Farm Road would be the second best. Right now, the exit for this neighborhood development is right there in my kids' windows. So I can only imagine 118 residents, probably on average, you have two cars. That's 236 cars in and out of the neighborhood shining in my front door. I ask that it be moved, you know, we've tried to reach out to D.R. Horton with the packet that they gave us several times through email. No, no response from them, so.
He's right here?
Yeah, I know.
Would you like to get a response?
I mean, that's that was my thing, we've emailed a few times and haven't heard anything. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you.
So you can see my concern for for that, you know, having having two kids playing in the front yard, not only just the light shining in the house, but their safety. You know, just watching them play in, is this car coming up, are they going to run the stop sign and come into my front yard? So I think we can all understand my concerns with that. Some of the things that we we are asking if if the stormwater and other things aren't looked at, like I said, I'm not going to talk about everything that we sent in the email. But, you know, we ask that leave the property zoning as is, if 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 not, that's one thing that we've we've asked about and postpone the the zoning decision until an updated concept plan addresses these concerns. That's that's and changing the zoning to to the R1A for the bigger lots. I think that's something that would be a lot more eye appealing for Columbia County personally. Change R2 with conditions and improvement be made to the road in accounting for stormwater issues. And then change R2 with no conditions and we hope for the best with the stormwater and then the future taxpayers take care of it later on down the road, which is something we're not wanting to do, but hopefully we can get it resolved before it gets to.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak out against this proposal?
My name's Ryan Backus, live at 431 Callaway Road Extension. I think Mr. Jackson pretty much nailed any of the key points, so I don't want to reiterate any of them, but
Thank you.
With with D.R. Horton coming in on the 69 acres or whatever it may be. You have to, with Four Winds and Four Oaks and then South Wind and Edgar Hughes owns 46 acres and then 69 acres. Horton are coming in. There has to be better means of agress coming on to Hurford Farm. You're going to, if you're going to bottleneck 200 vehicles onto the second house on Hur, on Callaway Road Extension. When there goes into phase two or whether South Broom goes into phase four and they extend over into those 40 acres, if they connect those, where they get sewer into the adjacent neighborhoods rather than going through the property, the power line at the bottom of the hill, you're talking about adding multiple, multiple amounts of car and traffic through that, through that road. You get hitting from hard to, hard to understand which direction I'm facing, going from Columbia Road towards on Hurford Farm, Callaway Road will be on your left. There is a crown on that road and they're supposed to, I imagine they're going to try to take that berm out when they do the widening process. Maybe two years down the road before we get to there, maybe. But you do kind of take your life in your own hands when you're trying to take a left on the Callaway. You literally look underneath the chassis of the vehicle's five, six cars up to see if you can see any kind of movement coming your way. And you just kind of space it out and you go. But I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the span is and the length between Hurford Farm and where they're trying to have the entrance into this concept plan. But simply moving that road over towards the point when it goes closer, and I think they said they may see about addressing that on the next site plan, but moving it closer towards that green area up at the front points directly on the towards that green area up at the front points directly on, on to Herford Farm Road, looks like there's 20, I can't make it out. But just turning that entrance over to Herford Farm Road so they can have an aggressive lane, they can have a lot easier entry on their end, I imagine they may have a second entrance then if they attached another phase to the other neighborhood when they come through, it just kind of may help get the headlights off that old road. The, it's hard to look at the top graphical view of, of Callaway Road, but when you turn on right about where their entrance is with the blue line, that's the top of a hill. You see the, the sign on the right side of the road, that's it, you're looking over it. If you don't have your, your eyes up, there's somebody coming over that hill, you're done. And, and it's just, it would be easier, why can they not just veer that, just why that road over to the left possibly turn on? So that it's not 100 feet in, slam on the brakes, try to figure out how, I, I'm a construction builder, I'm locally based out of Columbia County builder, don't do new construction, do, do everything else. And I understand the growth in Columbia County. Growth is great. You guys are going to make a lot more taxes off 115 houses than you will off the property taxes from Mr. Screws. It's, it's inevitable, but I don't want to jeopardize why people are moving to Columbia County for our quality of life and the quality of our, our, our housing and infrastructure of the city. And hear that towards giving up our quality for quantity. D.R. Horton's a big builder, 80,000 houses a year possibly, you look him up, low stars, I know people will, are quick to probably post a bad review versus a good one. But when you look it up, the only good ones I saw were from D.R. Horton. All the bad ones are like a 1.4 to 1.6 star out of five stars. That's not very good, and I just want to make sure that when, when they're building these houses, I get called to come in there and fix them. Now, last house is built, LLC's closed, they're gone. I, I, I come in and I look at the quality control of these houses, and I want to make sure that we're, if I have to abide by the same building practices in this county, I would hope that other businesses that come from out of state, based out of Texas or wherever they are, come here and they have to abide by the same building practices that I do. I know Mark, uh, Mark Woody, if he was still on the, different Mark Woody, if he was still there, Dennis Anderson's going to have a field day with him with stormwater. Uh, it, there's a, there's a lot of issues here that need to kind of be looked into a little bit further. I feel like they're, they have some ideas now where they're going to go forward with their next site plan, but it'd be better to have feet on the ground. Some of these pictures don't do justice. I actually live halfway down the road, so, so to speak, and, uh, probably brought in 30 tandem loads of number four for the, for tractors and equipment and trailers behind the shop. One bad rain two years ago, Masters Week on a Wednesday, it washed it all. Every piece of stone was gone. So there is a stormwater issue there.
Right.
Lot of that, my backyard will not, will not perk.
That's been stated.
You just.
Got a stormwater problem.
It's, it's, it's a funneling issue, but other than that, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak out? Forward.
My name's Jody Kamak, uh, on 421 Callaway Road Extension, and I appreciate all, all you've done, appreciate it, giving us the opportunity to talk about this. My main concern is, um, to go along with the others, but, but the way we know Herford Farm Road is going to get widened, and, um, so right now, there's no plans for any deceleration lane for Callaway, it's just a regular lane to turn off with the, with the traffic that we have on it now. The other thing about the road widening at Callaway is that is going to be the cut-through. So, um, if you're looking at having, you know, 200 and something more cars on that road, some of them want to turn to the right to go to Fort Gordon, a lot of them are going to want to be going to the left, and so you're going to have a ton of cars that's going to back up on Callaway Road with cars trying to wait to turn, turn around, or turn, make that, go across the traffic, which is a dangerous thing. And I know that's a couple of years off, but we need to be planning on that now because we don't want to get to the, to the, to the, it having to be a problem and DOT saying, no, this isn't something we're going to handle, this Columbia County's issue.
Right.
So, um, I really would recommend looking at either moving that entrance to Herford Farm Road where they could have a separate only, you know, the way that they're doing Herford Farm Road is if, if they pick your road and you don't have a crossing, you go down to a turnaround, which makes it very safe because you can get out, you go down, you know, 50 to 100 feet or whatever, and there's a turnaround for you to safely turn, and, um, even with the wider bay on the other side, so you can safely turn. And so that's why I feel like we need some better planning here on how that's going to interact with Herford Farm Road before we dump it all on Callaway Road. Um, that's my making.
All right, thank you. May I ask one more person? One more that would like to? Right. Is it a recommendation?
Chairman, I make a recommendation. I vote for R1 to R2, property of 41.
Second motion.
All in favor? Motion carries? Butler.
Senator Sherris requests a request for a major plan revision, S1 plan revision overall off Indigo Hall Drive, currently down to S1, revision to revise uses and layouts for an independent living community. Shows the location of three properties in question tonight, we're looking at these three here, being off Furious Ferry Road back on Indigo Hall Drive. Current zoning, uh, currently zoned S1, uh, you have lots of S, lots of R3 around it. I got some PUDs at the back, you know, behind the existing drive facility, cross street you got some C2 and some R3. Shows the early view of the site rotated at this point, kind of giving you an idea of what was going on there, and also to match it up with the concept plan they've given us, and the plot of the properties, and the existing site photos, and also existing sites showing it kind of from Indigo Hall Drive, then Thrive Assist Living at the back of the site itself. So overall, so it kind of give you a, a history lesson on this site. So back in 2017, there was a major revision with this, it had, it had the memory care ready for 2015, then we revised kind of up here with this nursing home, independent living, and added this medical office up front. So then in 2022, we had a revision to the parts on the south side that added this, basically turned into apartments, essentially, uh, independent living apartments. Uh, that was for 180 units total with four stories and three stories on, on, on two sides of it. So the revision tonight, so we have independent living cottages, the change there is just a change in density. Uh, you have here on the front, the medical office is going from medical office to independent living cottages, then over here going from independent living building to independent living building and also more cottages. It shows the overall concept plan, um, generally, so generally speaking, right now, you'd have 205 units that could go on the property, kind of divided between this, this property here and 25 kind of just here. The overall plan itself has a maximum of 160 units, we're dropping down 45 units overall. Uh, however, their current concept plan here, um, it's basically about 149, give or take. Uh, so again, there is some flexibility to add more, but again, it's one that you could give away in this situation. Uh, there are retaining walls on the property within these buffers that are here, um, really no issue with that, it's one that, there's some toe pole on this site, uh, kind of making up for that with some of these walls. Again, they're, they are facing inward to the site, so you won't, you won't be able to see them. Uh, in terms of the cottages, you know, you can see all, they all, they all have garages. All the garages are facing away from Furious Ferry Roads, so they're not all visible. Uh, so that's kind of an overall view of everything. We'll now kind of get into the individual sites themselves. So going with the first one on the very, very back, this, this currently allows, allows for 25 cottages, being reduced down to 17, mixture of duplex and quadplexes here. Again, you can kind of see the overall design with the garages there. Uh, next property's up front, where it used to be medical, now it's going to independent cottages. Again, change there, you have some quadplexes and duplexes. Again, you can see the garages all facing away from Furious Ferry. Lastly, you have the three-story independent living, this will have approximately 100 apartments within it. Uh, it does have garages, has tuck-under garages, you can see here, um, and here, and here, um, also some cover parking potentially, uh, also lots of golf cart parking. Uh, on the overall plan, as I mentioned before, uh, there's trails between all these different sites, and basically, if you live in any of the three, you can basically share amenities with this, this, with this property here, which has, you know, pickleball and that sort of thing, what we all like to see now apparently with, uh, development. Again, you do, you can see some duplexes here, and on the front end of the site itself, you, again, it has some quadplexes and more duplexes, uh, having some modifications made to the site over time on the front, uh, in coordination with GDOT. Um, so overall, again, the, the biggest thing is we're, we're reducing density, we're changing the uses to basically more cottages essentially, uh, which is kind of more preferable in a more single-family type area. Shows the renderings of the cottages themselves, and then again, this is not necessarily locking it in, they have a list of materials that they're going to use, but it kind of shows here's what this could look like. Uh, there is a, oh, let me go into this first, in terms of future, you can go about future land use. First future land use here along the professional corridor, kind of heard, heard about that before, uh, does allow for professional uses, this is not really a professional use, however, it has, it was there before this, this comp plan, uh, it is a reduction in density, so it's one that we're comfortable with at this point. So in terms of the only condition we have, there's a downstream analysis of stormwater runoff to determine there's no adverse impact properties downstream. Uh, there is a, basically an older pond further, uh, to the, I guess we'll call it the northwest situation, kind of back in this area, um, that it's had some issues, we just want to be sure that the development of the site does not impact that. Again, we've already been in contact with the developer about that, but that's the only condition from staff, that includes staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. The owner and applicant, would you like to come forward and speak?
Thank you, Jeremy Ragsdale, 999 Fern Cliff Road, Atlanta. Will's done a great job laying it out, I've got nothing to add but happy to answer any questions. This is an expansion to our private Augusta community that's already there, and, um, our lovely team members here that keep that building full has a great reputation in the community toward expanding it.
Nice. Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in the audience opposed to this? Motion?
Senator Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of RZ 24-05-05, major S1 revision of the properties at 2,000, 2,200, and 2,221 Indigo Hall Drive to revise the allowed uses and site plan.
Second. All in favor? Here's.
Senator Sherris requests for rezoning and conditional use at 102 South Old Bel Air Road and 4730 Columbia Road. We're doing a, a portion of 30, 4730 Columbia Road, totals 3.24 acres. Request is, uh, the, our, the current zoning is C2 and CC, we'll kind of see how those are broken out in a moment. Currently undeveloped, request is a conditional use for a liquor store and a rezoning from CC to C2 for a portion of that property. Shows the location of two properties in question, we're dealing basically with this area here to the west location. Being located at South Old Bel Air Road and Columbia Road, uh, this is where that, the new light was put in about a year ago. Uh, in terms of current zoning, in the property in the corner, currently zoned C2, property on, based on this, currently zoned CC, community commercial. You have across the street on South, South Old Bel Air, South Old Bel Air Road, excuse me, a property zoned C2, that is for, I think it's a gas pro, a gas station of some kind. Um, then you have R1 across the street to the north, across Columbia Roads, R2, the south, you have the Brookwood Town Homes, and then far east, you have more R2. Shows area of view of the site, again, we've basically, nothing's changed with that, and the existing site itself from the corner, and the plot of the two properties, and the overall conceptual plan. So again, we're dealing with rezoning the C2 part here, and then the remainder, which is CC, also to C2. So one thing to remember with the site itself is that both of these properties have been rezoned for well over 25 years, um, as they currently are, undeveloped over that entire time. It's not a bad thing per se, it was one of those, just realize there's a history here. Uh, the other thing is in 2007, the county did, um, basically have a list of properties that they wanted to rezone back to residential, um, those actually had the process started, then it was stopped at the BOC level. Uh, so again, there has been some discussion in the past about these properties being zoned as they are currently. So again, this concept plan does show a 12,000 square foot liquor store here, uh, within that liquor store, there are about 8,000 to 9,000 square feet will be liquor store itself, the remaining 4,000 to 3,000 will be basically tenant spaces, then you have stormwater management pond here, then parking, of course, and then entrance off of South Old Bel Air and Columbia Road. Columbia Road is GDOT, um, they have not really commented on this plan, uh, they did kind of say that entrance may move a little bit, but one of those, that's up to them on that side of things. Uh, from a staff standpoint, you go to the next slide, so what we're looking at with liquor stores, or with the, the conditional use particularly, overall, it's location, you know, what, what, what is it away from? There's distance requirements, uh, for multiple, multiple uses. The first one being other liquor stores, so it's a one-mile distance requirement. This situation is well away, I mean, the closest one's over here at Golden Package over on South Bel Air Road, uh, so it meets that requirement. So the next part of that is that we are looking at distances from parks, schools, and religious institutions, and also alcohol treatment facilities, which can be a bit of an interesting definition of things. And this is a little bit hard to look at, it's, it's got some odd measurements on it. So again, you have, so over here is, um, 143 Ministries, uh, we're calling them a church because they function in that way, but they also have some manner of alcohol treatment. But again, they're over 1,000 feet away, it's 1,640, give or take. Um, so they, they meet, it meets that distance requirement of 1,000 feet. Uh, to the south, we have the school here, Savannah River Academy, um, it's 1,955 feet away, and then we have all over here, 1.1, over a mile away, 1.01 is Blanchard Park. From a staff standpoint, liquor store meets all those requirements by quite a good bit. Um, and that's even measuring, it, it would actually be even further away if you measured it from the, the actual door, which we don't know where, where it would be, there's one that, you know, we've kind of given it, you know, e- even the smallest are, the smallest measurement it could get. So, that kind of says the conditional use side of things, there's really no reason for us to say no in this situation. Now, in terms of future development, that's kind of where it gets a little more interesting. So this is a lot, this is with, with a neighborhood's character area, like, along this, this whole cor, or the, on this part of the corridor of Columbia Road. Neighborhood's character area means exactly what it says, it means residential development, it means having resi, it means single-family homes, there's the townhomes on here, it doesn't really call for commercial development. Uh, the, the, uh, gas station across the street, uh, staff was very much not in favor of that due to the, the comp plan, it was approved, um, so the, the issue becomes the expansion of the actual C2 zoning itself. Uh, staff is not in favor of that, uh, it's one that the C, the C2 and the CC have been there for decades at this point, um, that is fine, that is something that happened a long time ago, uh, there's no taking of that, that, that use there, it's more of yes, we, we, you can have the C2 with the conditional use, but the C2 itself cannot be expanded, in our opinion. Uh, due to those, all, all those factors, uh, staff recommends approval of the conditional use for a liquor store and disapproval to rezoning from CC, that includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The owner and applicant, would you like to come forward and speak in behalf of this request?
I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, 4210 Columbia Road, Martinez, I'm the engineer for the project, I'm here to speak on behalf of the owner. Um, Will did a good job of covering the situation, um, as he mentioned, the, um, one portion of the property is already zoned C2, um, and so for that piece, we were looking for the special, um, conditional use for, uh, the package store, and the remainder of the property is CC, which we wanted to get rezoned. Will and I discussed this, um, when the staff report came out, and, uh, the interpretation is if the, the planning commission and the board of commissioners were to go along with the staff's recommendation, that the package store could be built, but only on the portion of the property that is currently zoned C2, and the, the, the portion of the property that is CC will, will remain CC, and the building, liquor store couldn't be on that, uh, part of the property. Um, the, the zoning line is shown on the concept plan, and we've looked at that, um, with the applicant, and we can modify the site plan so that the building is shifted and the parking i- is adjusted so that we would not be building, uh, the package store building or portion of the building on the CC. So, um, all of that to say that if the, the planning commission so chooses to go along with the staff's recommendation, we can adjust the site plan and make that work, um, based on the staff, staff's recommendation and, and aisle of the rezoning. I'm glad to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Before I ask you if you want to speak opposed, we did get about 20 emails with, uh, several bullets about why you're opposed, so I'm going to allow three people to come up and, uh, leave three people that are opposed to this to save time because we can look at our emails. Please come on up and state your name and address. Please come on up and state your name and address.
My name is Brian Boyd, 4751 Brookwood Drive. I'm going to keep it quick and simple. Uh, Jonah did a good display here showing that there's one within a mile. I'll take it a little bit more than that. Within a four mile radius, there are three places. Within a five mile radius, there are 10 places. 10 mile radius, there are 20 places. I just don't see the point, y'all. Like, if we're that desperate for a drink, maybe we got something else we need to be focusing on. That's all I got.
I understand. Thank you, sir. Another one? Come on up, please.
I'm Ingrid Jenkins. I live at 4717 Brookwood Drive and I've lived there since 1996. I was one of the first people to move in my building and I'm definitely a tree person. And, uh, I taught school 28 years. I'm retired. I taught at Westmont briefly, but I've taught in Columbia County, Richmond County. I've taught in Burke County and in North Carolina. I, they are building a huge school. There's going to be more people with children moving into this area and I really hate to see such a nice residential area become familiar with a liquor store. And there are, I'm so glad this young man had the numbers because you left some off of that map. There's one right up there next to the laundromat across from the, um, drugstore. Some drugstores now sell liquor, hard liquor. That gas station has already had enough crime problems. And if you remember, someone stole the cement truck right in broad daylight and the chase was on, on the news. They also drop off homeless people there and there's also homeless people dropped off up at the, um, Bel Air Road gas station because I've been confronted with them wanting to pump gas in my car. So I, as a retired school teacher with these private schools and a huge school right up there on Oakley Perkel, I'm very concerned about children living this close to a liquor store.
Thank you.
There are a lot of people in there that rent now and our neighborhood is just now sort of turning the corner because so many people, they've weighed money under their nose and they've left and there's now renters in there. I'm an original owner. I don't want to rent. I don't need to rent and there are several people in here that feel the same way.
I'm well aware of that.
I was going to email you. I'm not going to repeat because we've all talked and I don't know if B is here or not, but we have a wonderful homeowners association that's finding people and that road is already so narrow. And I live on Brookwood Drive. Brookwood Lane has the swimming pool and I know with the taxes have gone up at least $300 to $500 this past year on these units. They were well constructed. They weren't meant, they were meant to be houses and I cannot see them putting a liquor store right next to a swimming pool where after May 30th until Labor Day, there are grandparents in there with their children, people, we've had to put cameras up. We've got everything under control with that swimming pool and as far as vandalism's concerned. Those streets are so narrow when they're, that if somebody parks, they can only park perpendicular for about 30 minutes. But especially as a teacher, when I see somebody trying to plant a liquor store right next to a swimming pool and those people over there, their property values are going to go down and we just don't need that. We're just now getting ready to turn the corner that people will take care of their little front yards in there.
Okay, well, thank you.
And there's all ages in there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Got one more? Please come forward.
Barry Bennetkin, I live at 4696 Brookwood Lane. I didn't plan to speak tonight until I saw the map. When you come out of Brookwood Lane, within a quarter of a mile is a, is a light, okay? Thank you. You did put the light in. That is still a very dangerous intersection. When I look at the way this map is laid out, if you're coming out of Brookwood Lane and you have to turn into that bell, go down Columbia Road, you've got the liquor store entrance right there. Going to have parking lot backing up to people's homes that have lived there more than, what? Almost 30 years now? Okay, I can understand that, but this was thrown upon us and we haven't had a chance to have a homeowner association meeting, but we planned, if you do approve this, to be at the commissioner's meeting. I know you've received a lot of emails. The main concern is property values have, have steadily risen in that neighborhood, okay? And I'll be in there 20 years, June 1st. I don't have a problem paying more taxes, but I depend on y'all to keep it nice. And my taxes have steadily gone up. I don't have a problem, but I have a problem with this liquor store. There's enough liquor being sold in the gas station. There's a, there's a way to get into the gas station off of Columbia Road, but if you look at Columbia Road was widened, I lived through that. It still doesn't have a center turn lane. You have a bike lane which would run in front of that property. Where is all this traffic? I, have you seen the traffic down South Bel Air Road and Columbia Road from Fort Gordon trying to get to Groovy Town? Well, you know, you can't get out of our neighborhood now because of all the cars. They back up, they back up from that light all the way down almost to the old school, okay? Past Oakley Perkel from 4:30 to almost 6 o'clock. Now you want to add a liquor store? Well, I just hope that they buy the liquor and they don't drink it before they drive out of there because somebody's going to end up dead.
Thank you so much.
And I will see you at the commissioner's meeting.
Okay, can we get a motion? On the, we're going to make a motion on the liquor.
Yeah, let me clarify. We're going to do two separate motions.
Yes, sir.
We're going to do the, uh, the conditional use first and then vote on that and then do the second one.
Correct.
We'll do the rezoning component.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of conditional use for a liquor store at 102 South Old Bel Air Road.
The second? All in favor? That motion has been disapproved, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also make a motion to, uh, disapprove the rezoning from CC to C2 at 102 South Old Bel Air Road and a portion of the 4730 Columbia Road.
Second? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for rezoning and conditional use, 840-850 Sana Drive, 3.54 acres total. Currently zoned C2, TR, and R2. Uh, currently it's undeveloped slash vacant and rezoning, or the request is a rezoning at C3, the conditional use for light industrial uses. This is location of the property. So again, we have access off of Washington Road, but we also have a little portion over here that goes to Gibbs Road. Uh, the portion on Gibbs Road is not being touched. It's not even, it's not being rezoned. It's just kind of there in this situation. Uh, there's a condition regarding the Santa Drive portion here that's also not being rezoned. We're essentially rezoning this piece outlined in red overall. A bit convoluted. Anyway, that's the location of the property. And currently zoned C2 on the front, TR on the back and R2. Again, you have some mostly C2 along Washington Road that it's adjacent to, but it is adjacent to R2 development, uh, along the back of the properties. This is a real view of the site. And the existing site, this kind of shows going into the site itself. Uh, we do, we, we do have a variation that kind of goes back to kind of how far away this site is from the, from the property, but we'll get to that in a moment. And again, this shows the existing site itself further back at the end of Sana Drive on the TR zone portion. This shows the plot of the property. Again, this thing on the front, I, I keep harping on it, but it's, it's a, an ingress, egress easement. It's, it, it wasn't really done correctly a long time ago. We'll, we'll take care of those. And again, the overall concept plan, so we're, we're, what we're seeing here, again, it's a request for C3 with, with light industrial uses. So you're going to be looking at, these are office warehouses essentially. Um, they are on a little bit of a small side, but again, that's, you know, up to the applicant on how, on how they actually develop. But you have basically two rows here and then a row at the back, um, then also dumpster pad over here. Um, overall, the request itself, um, it, it kind of, it, it doesn't necessarily meet 100% the comp plan, but there is some development we'll see here in a moment that's close by, um, that it is very similar to. However, there are some concerns with it, uh, mostly with, you know, picking up this dumpster pad, um, in, in the mornings, also light on the, light on, with the adjacent properties. I'm just making sure they're not impacting these R2 properties here and here. Uh, one of the things with kind of how it will be developed moving forward, is the engineer here this evening? I didn't see Bo walk in. No, all right. So one of the, one of the questions that's come up is about the stormwater. This is the existing intentional pond. Again, this was kind of graded out in the past. Um, it was allowed, so they, they built the pond. It actually connects to the, the storm system, which goes this way. Uh, however, hasn't really been maintained over time. Uh, it has caused some concern for the property owners behind this essentially. Um, as it's developed, basically what will happen is that the entire site will be lined with erosion control. That'll be basically a silt fence, all likelihood, probably a double row, that sort of thing. We'll, we'll figure that out as we move forward. Um, it'll be basically lined before they start doing the work out there. The pond itself will likely get bigger. Um, it will be cleaned out. It will be made, make sure it is, it is working. Um, it'll, again, it'll likely be bigger because this is quite a bit of impervious that we're looking at here. Um, so there, there will be lots of changes on the site in terms of as it progresses forward. It's not just going to, you know, come out and build these and move on. Um, and again, it'll go through different phases during, during the erosion sedimentation of different, you know, ponds perhaps being built on there to carry sediment as it's developed. Uh, but again, it will not just be constructed out of, you know, whole cloth. It'll be lots of changes to the site itself. Uh, you do have buffers on the site. They're 40 feet against residential here and it's actually a 20 foot on the commercial as well. Again, quite a lot of, of buffering on the site itself. So moving, moving on to the future development side of things, so the one that this is really similar to is the property here. Um, you have basically a office warehouse, self-storage type thing at the back of the site with C2 on the front. Again, very similar in manner to that, to, to development on this site. Um, again, this is a bit, a bit odd. You have this C2 on the front with this TR existing. The TR really isn't developable. Um, you know, the, the additional uses that are there are the additional, um, you know, traction of office warehouse will attract some uses that are beneficial for the area in some respects and also some of the things that we don't have in Columbia County. Uh, so it does, it, it meets the future development based on those situations. Um, now in terms of, of conditions, we do have several. Again, one of them, outdoor storage of vehicles and our materials out per minute on the site. Uh, dumpster pickup shall be between the hours of 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. You know, all lying on the site shall be children in screen, our children directed. You know, that'll be reviewed at site plan. That shows how they're doing that, should give us a photo metric. And lastly, addressing the access road from Washington Road, that'll be basically carved off as its own parcel and be a private, or private road essentially. Uh, again, staff recommends approval with those conditions. That includes staff recommendation.
Thanks, Will. Owner and applicant like to come forward and speak on behalf of request?
I'm a native Columbia County, live in Appling now, uh, representing the ownership. Don't really want to add anything to what Will said, but I'm here for any questions.
Don't have any questions? Anybody in the audience like to speak out in favor of this proposal? Anybody in the audience would like to speak out opposed? Please come forward.
Doug Hill, 549 Brander Mill Road. I'm not really opposed. I just want to bring up one thing. I live and Mr. Rebecca Smith lives down the hill from the detention. Burnt detention pond has trees in it this year. Had to be cleared out. We had a lot of concern with the whole top of that hill being cleared off and runoff coming down there. She's been flooded in the past. I guess the only point I'd like to make on this was if this is approved for zoning, that detention pond and all the clearing that was explained by Mr. Butler, that could be done upfront because if they come in there and clear that all and there's a big pond won't be, just a matter of getting that. Possibly as a condition.
I'd like to discuss that detention pond.
Yes, ma'am.
This is no value to us. It is filled with trees, trash, mosquitoes galore, and it's right at the corner of my lot. I have taken about 10 feet of my lot back toward my house and fenced that in to keep some of the water off of my property. I have a ditch built by my, my expense. Coming down from that property, going into the weir, this, which is between my property and Doug's property. It will overflow. I have had to redo shrubbery, oh, redo shrubbery in my yard where that water has just washed it down in the Brander Mill Road, out of my yard. So I've had a mess with that over there for years. I have been there since 1977. The weir has been built since then. I've been in Columbia County since 19, I mean, 1999. I've been there, 1979, I've been in Columbia County. I have never had this problem anywhere in Columbia County. I was public health charge nurse for Columbia County for 13 years and I have enjoyed living here, but that's a mess.
Yes, ma'am.
And if they build something over there, they...
Thank you. Thank you so much. Get one more person.
I have a mosquito praying. That doesn't do any good because that, that retention, that, um, retention pond has water in it and just stands in all the time. It don't drain.
Yes, ma'am.
And they put it up there promising that the water would stay off of us and...
Thank you so much.
My name is Ellen White Chazrae and I live at 543 Astor Court in Country Place. I serve as the Assistant Secretary to the Place Homeowners Association. Uh, so I'm kind of got, I've kind of got a collection of, of comments from, from our residents and I know that you're considering this in two sections. Um, so good news for you. I'm speaking once and I'm putting it all together. So any rezoning to property that borders Country Place may adversely affect the use and enjoyment of Country Place residential properties and the general residential nature of Country Place neighborhood overall. Rezoning 840-850 Santa Drive per the application would place single-family residential property immediately adjacent to heavy commercial, light industrial property. A practice generally avoided in, in Columbia County and which the planning department noted in its report does not fit neatly into the future land uses. And while the existing zoning would be debatable with the primary future land, part me also noted by planning, Country Place quest, Country Place neighborhood questions if C3 light industrial is the best zoning solution. Once a C3 light industrial zoning is approved, a number of uses are permitted that are not compatible with a residential neighborhood. While the applicant may be dedicated to the warehouse office development represented in his preliminary plan or concept plan, my apologies, I'm not, I'm not sure which is the appropriate term. Um, a preliminary plan is just that preliminary. It can be changed. That's a reality Country Place needs to consider long-term. We also need to consider uses that could be introduced to the, this development in the future if C3 light industrial is approved. Country Place certainly appreciates the open communication we have had with the planning department regarding this rezoning request. We also appreciate the consideration of planning department, uh, the, the consideration of the planning department in proposing conditions to prohibit outdoor storage of vehicle materials on, I mean, you've gone through that, through that. So, uh, we, we do appreciate that. Restricting dumpster time, uh, dumpster pickup times, shielding and directing light. We also note its conditions on the access road from Washington Road and hope that no access will be permitted from Gibbs Road. Our residents do have concerns, however. Some of those include the potential impact of cut-through traffic in Country Place and the potential environmental impact a heavy commercial, light industrial zoning would have on the neighborhood. And specifically, several residents express concern about, uh, lights shining through the trees, especially in the fall and winter when branches are there. Um, hopefully the lighting conditions set forth by the, uh, recommended by the planning will... will eliminate this.